The City of Andalea Council Meeting for March the 6th, 2017 is now called to order. We will have a moment of reflection followed by the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag. Would you please stand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Counsel, you have the council's special meeting minutes of February the 9th, the special meeting minutes of February the 18th, the council's study session minutes of February the 20th, and the council meeting minutes of February the 20th. Are there any revisions or corrections to those? Seeing none, they'll stand approved. We have no communication petitions or awards this evening, nor do we have any public hearings, and that brings us to comments from interested citizens. So if there's anybody in the audience who would like to make comments to us, would you please come to the podium, state your name and address for our records, and then your comment, certainly?
What's that to you about?
Yeah, you can come up to the podium, yeah, certainly. Thank you. Now, don't forget your name and address.
My name is Brenda Morris. I live at 29 Gross Bet Street. And I was reading that you have, I have a problem with stray cats and dogs. I personally, I've been here for eight years, I've not seen one dog, one stray cat. And if you have a problem with the stray cats, you need to take them into the Vandelia, to the Montgomery County Rescue Center. That's where I volunteer. They will take care of them. And if you can't take them there, bring them to me, I'll take them. They need to have homes, and if you can't, they, if they're feral, they will have them neutered or spayed and released. Okay? That's my comments.
Oh, we do appreciate that. Thank you so very much.
My name is Cheryl Dibdell. I live at 6905 Dear Bluff Drive in Hoover Heights, Ohio. I am here to address the February 20th comments about feral cats. Good evening, Mayor Setser and city council members. Though I do not live in Vandelia, I have been working in Vandelia for nearly 18 years. I myself have taken close to 20 adult cats and 15 kittens from Vandelia. All but two cats have been spayed and neutered, up to date on shots, and have been adopted through various adoption agencies. It is my understanding that the city is in the process of passing an ordinance banning the feeding of cats. I believe the issue in the city is not the feeding of the cats, but the increase in population. TNR, Trap, Neuter, Return, is a proven humane method to control cat overpopulation. Tonight in the audience are members of TNR groups, and I feel it would be imperative for the city to hear what these TNR groups have to offer. I have also brought with me information for you to review in the hopes that you would at least consider setting time aside for a study session for just this issue. That way, the various TNR groups can help the city understand how their efforts are making a difference in this and surrounding counties. I believe that TNR may assist the city in finding a happy medium for all citizens of Vandelia in still maintaining the feeding of cats and to help reduce the population. Thank you. And I do have information to pass out for everyone.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Is there some others of you going to speak then also? Thank you.
Hello, my name is Deborah Smith. I'm a co-founder of Calico TNR.
I'm Jody Patton, co-founder of Calico TNR from Springfield, Ohio.
We actually, Calico stands for Cat Alliance located in central Ohio. We have no borders. We've actually been trapping in Montgomery County. So I'm gonna try to start reading. I have a very bad cold. She may have to take over for me. Okay, sorry.
Would you, would you just put the mic up just a little bit?
Sure.
Thank you.
Calico TNR urges the city council commission not to pass a feeding ban. Feeding bans are counterproductive because they undermine the only successful method of addressing the feral cat population, Trap, Neuter, Return. Feeding bans will not decrease the feral cat population because feral cats do not depend on people feeding them to survive. There are always other food sources in populated areas. As scavengers, cats will find food in garage cans and dumpsters. Cats are territorial, bonded to their surroundings, and will not leave simply because compassionate people can no longer legally feed them. A feeding ban will result in cats roaming further to find food and digging through people's trash. It can actually increase calls to animal control. If Vandelia wants to decrease the cat, feral cat population, Trap, Neuter, Return is the only humane and effective solution. Feral cats are the same species as pet cats, but feral cats are not adoptable because they are not socialized to people. Under TNR, cats are humanely trapped, neutered, and vaccinated and returned to their outdoor homes. The cat feral, cat feral population stabilizes and decreases. Feeding bans do not allow Trap, Neuter, Return to be carried. Oh, the cats in our community will continue to have kittens, and the feral cat population will increase. Please do not punish the good Samaritans in Vandelia who spend their own time and money to carry out TNR and finds homes for adoptable kittens. Thank you for your time and consideration.
And I'd just like to add, TNR, we, doesn't cost the taxpayers a dime. Groups like us, we, we do it for the citizens.
May I ask you a question? Is there a group here in Vandelia? Do you know?
There's probably some people that stretch out. Cheryl does it on her own. And we have associate members. We actually just did a project that was on the edge of rural Tip City but bordered on Vandelia. And I'm sure the cats don't realize they can't walk over that border. So we're gonna consider it Vandelia.
Calico has no borders, and we would be happy to assist.
We have done over 1,600 cats. We work with Clark County Humane Society. We have backing with the Sheriff Department in Clark County. We work with Champaign County. There's a, what is it, Champaign County Humane Society. It's His Hands Extended Sanctuary. They actually do all of our Trap, Neuter, and Return.
Yeah, they do our surgeries and rabies shots.
Yeah, and they vet all the cats. If we, we have consent forms, we have caretakers sign, because if we've taken a cat and he's sick or diseased to the point that the vet makes a call to euthanize him, we will do that if it's, it's because of a life condition. We will euthanize the cat. If they're adoptable kittens, we ourselves do not, Calico TNR does not do adoptions, but we have a network with people who do adoptions. So if we come across a kitten, a litter of kittens that can be socialized, we maybe turn the mother after they're weaned and then hand them off to like someone like Cheryl and some other ladies who do it on their own and get their cats adopted out. We have ladies-
The euthanasia is the last stage if it's unsavable.
Right. And we do, all cats are vaccinated with the rabies vaccine, because as in Clark County, we need to ensure that for the health department. They are all ear tipped, so if you ever see a cat running around with a ear tip, it's already vaccinated, spayed and neutered. And we do, we're here to offer you that we would be willing to put boots on the ground to do an assessment in Vandelia, go to the neighbors, the neighborhoods where you guys think there's issues, we'll write you up an assessment, cats we see, people we talk to, the caretakers. We're happy to do that assessment on a Trap, Neuter, Return basis. We will not assist on a trap and kill basis.
I think, I think one of the issues, I don't think, I don't think any of us have, any of us or some citizens have a problem with TNR.
Right.
The issue is putting food out, and it's attracting raccoons, opossums, skunk, coyote.
We educate on that, yes. We, we educate on the feeding.
When we, yeah.
Yeah, if you're gonna feed, you don't do it after hours, after dark, you don't leave the litter man.
Right. We do, when we do the assessments and talk to the caretakers or the people in the neighborhood, we explain-
But that, I mean, that's basically what our, if we do pass an ordinance, that's what our ordinance is addressing. The feet, the, leaving out food, that's attracting all the wild animals.
Right. But when we talk to the caretakers, we tell them, you, if you are feeding stray or feral cats, you can't just take food out at dusk and leave it there all night because the raccoons and opossums and the skunks are coming up.
Right. That, that argument has been made and rejected by certain citizens that continue to do it even though their neighbors have begged them to stop.
Okay. Well, then that would be, I mean, that would be something-
Which has created skunk issues and attacks and dogs getting sprayed.
Skunks love bird feed.
Right. So that, I, I think, John, I'm not sure what our thing is. Don't we have a contract where they take, is that the kill part of it or what we have right now?
Well, they can take them, the cats, to the Animal Resource Center.
Okay, that's not what you guys are talking about.
No, that's trap and kill.
Okay.
And that creates a vacuum effect, so if you don't have, when you take cats back and they're spayed and neutered, they actually are more stabilized. They stay, they are, they're territorial. I mean, if you, if you like dogs, you think dogs are territorial, cats are the same way. They're territorial. They will not allow other unneutered males or cats into their colony, they're very specific to their food source. But what it does is, when you remove them all, you trap and kill them all, it's a vacant, it's a vacuum effect. There's no one there, all these other cats come in, have more babies, and you just, you're fighting an on ending.
It starts over again. Yeah. So, and the feeding ban too, I think a lot of your citizens are concerned that the cats are gonna starve, which is, you know, they have passed an abuse law, that is part of the abuse. Starvation is inhumane. But I see what you're saying about, I think, you know, they just, we just need to educate here too. We've actually fought this before in one, and you, hey, if you, if you wanna have a colony, you want, you want it to be successful and spay and neuter, then stop leaving food out after dark.
Exactly.
Because you're only bringing harm.
That's where it falls under the wildlife, feeding the wildlife, because actually stray cats, feral cats, no matter what they are, they are domestic animals.
Yeah, they're not a wild animal.
But it's the wildlife, and that's what you get in trouble for.
That's what we're trying to prevent more than anything, and-
But like I said, my neighbor feeds tons of birds, and an actual skunk trapper told me, there's your skunk problem right there. So I mean, if you're gonna go for the cats, then you might have to take one more step further because that bird feeder brings in the skunks. So I mean, if you're really concerned about the wildlife, you gotta look at the whole picture.
But we also have brochures and, when we go around to communities and to the neighbors and the caretakers, and we talk to the neighbors who don't like the cats and don't want them there, and we give them brochures about deterrence, how to keep the cats out of there. We've gone to the, you know, if you really wanna be a good neighbor, and you don't want that cat visiting over there because she likes flowers and has flowers, then you buy her a solar repellent to keep those cats out of her. That's the best thing you can do. You have to compromise with your neighbors. If you're willing to, I, I bought one of my neighbors a solar repellent, and we've been fine for two years. And my other neighbor has birdhouses, and she raised the feeders up, but you know, we get along. Once in a while, the cat gets the bird, but sometimes she doesn't mind if it's a blue jay, I don't know why. She doesn't care if it's a blue jay, but-
Sometimes the hogs in the yard are getting my birds.
But I mean, it's just a compromise, and it's just an education with people to working with each other. You know, we all work in the community, we live with neighbors. We just have to compromise.
Make it better.
But we do help, we try to, we work with both, pro and anti-cat people. We're not crazy cat ladies. We're out there stopping litters from being born. We don't want hordes of little kittens all over and hoard them. We want it to stop. We want it to be, you know, it'd be great if cats were a commodity that you spend a hundred dollars and to buy one.
They're not going away. But we, our goal is to see a TNR group in every county, because like I said, we have no borders, but if we can find citizens here, and we can educate them, we can help them get started, you know, it would be great.
We actually mentored and had a group start in Pickwell called Persson Pickwell. They in turn mentored a group in Troy called Cat Advocates of Troy. So we work well with-
With Logan County.
Yeah, Logan County. We got, they were gonna do a feeding ban. We got that reversed, and they now have a Logan County TNR project that is fully endorsed by their council. You know, we, when we go to trap, a neighbor is just so you know, because we know that there's pets, people that have pets and they let them out. When we go to trap, do an assessment, we go to trap, we hang brochures on every door to tell them the day we're coming to trap, and if you have a pet that's already fixed or maybe wants to go outside or not, keep it inside that day. Because if it goes in the trap and it's not ear tipped, it's gonna get fixed.
Thank you. First of all, thank you for all the information. Some of us have watched videos and so forth and talked with people about, not, not you personally, but about that method. And as of right now, I'm not saying that this is going to be forever and ever, but as of right now, we needed to do something rather quickly and to alert people that feeding outside after dark is not going to be really permitted. That is not-
You're banning the half to dump.
Pardon me?
You're banning the half to dump.
Well, yeah, we, we wanna change, we wanna try to change how people feed and let them be, let them know about that. But that is not to say that we wouldn't welcome a group. And I know tomorrow night at our Neighborhood Watch, the resource, I don't remember Mark from the Resource Center is going to be there to, to help explain to people. But the city just can't go out and do this. We need a group such as you, and so, but we're not equipped to organize that group of people and know what to do and so forth. So if there are some people here in Vandelia who would be willing to take on the job that you're doing all over, it sounds like, we would be most appreciative, but-
We did put out on our Facebook and social media that we're there to mentor, that anyone's interest is shared, we're spreading the word, and the hope we're trying to get a group of people that are actually citizens of Vandelia.
Well, that would be very, very helpful, and I hope that you understand our position too, and that as we go down this road, certainly we would want to, to consider other methods besides just what we're doing right now. I think I'm talking on behalf of everybody on council, so.
What do we, what do we find if, like, we, once we got a group of citizens together to come back with those citizens?
You're asking me to get the citizens, or?
No, no, I'm saying, if we get a group of citizens together.
Sure.
What do we find if we come back to another council meeting with those citizens?
Sure. Tell us what you're doing, how you're doing it, and that, yeah, that'd be wonderful.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, seeing that we have no one else that wants to come and talk to us this evening, let's go on and have Mr. Cruzey tell us about the action item.
Thank you. Well, again, this evening, we were, council was scheduled to consider an appointment of Claudia Terrell to the Planning Commission. She was also scheduled to talk to council this evening during your study session. Unfortunately, she's ill today, so this will be postponed until council's March 20th meeting.
Okay. Thank you. This evening, we have some old business, and Mr. McDonald, would you read Ordinance 16-40 for us, please?
Ordinance 1640 and Ordinance Amending Sections 123204, 123403, 127302, 127306A, and 127307, and Repealing Section 127310 of the Planning and Zoning Code within the Codified Ordinances of the City of Vandelia Regarding Variance Criteria and Planned Unit Development Amendments.
Thank you. Mr. Cruzey, is there something you'd like to say?
Sure, a couple things. First of all, because this matter was tabled at your December 19th meeting, council will need to adopt a motion to untable this ordinance prior to giving it its second reading. However, the purpose of the ordinance is to revise the variance standards to comply with the standards that are considered by the courts, and also to have variances that are in existing residential PUDs reviewed by the BZA rather than the Planning Commission. Additionally, a per direction at your February 18th special meeting, we've revised Section 1273.02, which deals with conflicts of laws and PUD variances, to read subsection D. The administrative officer shall provide Planning Commission and City Council a report for any proposed PUD creation or modification that requires City Council approval, identifying all zoning matters where the proposed PUD or modification differs from an underlying zone requirement.
Okay, thank you. I need a motion to untable Ordinance 16-40.
So moved.
Second. It's been moved by Vice Mayor Lewis, second by Councilwoman Farce, that we untable Ordinance 16-40. May I have a vote, please?
Councilmember Gerhardt.
Yes.
Councilmember Farce.
Yes.
Councilmember Herbst.
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers.
Yes.
Councilmember Blakeslee.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis.
Yes.
Mayor Setser.
Yes, and the motion passes seven to zero. Now I need a motion to approve 16, Ordinance 16-40 as amended.
I'll make that motion that we approve 1640 as amended.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilman Blakeslee, second by Councilman Herbst, that we approve 1640 as amended. Since this is an ordinance and a second reading, I will open a public hearing, so if there's anyone in the audience that wants to speak to this, will you please come to the podium, state your name and address for our records, and your statement? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. And does council have anything to say? Seeing none, call the roll, please.
Councilmember Ayers.
Yes.
Councilmember Blakeslee.
Yes.
Councilmember Gerhardt.
Yes.
Councilmember Farce.
Yes.
Councilmember Herbst.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis.
Yes.
Mayor Setser.
Yes, and the motion carries seven, zero. Resolution 17R-24, Mr. McDonald.
Resolution 17R-24, resolution awarding the bid for asphaltic concrete requested by the Public Works Department to Valley Asphalt Corp. in the amount of $67 a ton for type two asphalt and $68 a ton for type one asphalt as the lowest and best bid.
Thank you, Mr. Cruzey.
Thank you, Your Honor. So bids for asphalt were opened on February 14th with Valley Asphalt submitting the loan bid. This bid is to purchase asphalt on an as-needed basis for the Public Works and Golf Departments. We have $35,000 budgeted in the Permissive License Fund, and that's to, again, to repair minor street, or minor street repairs, potholes, again, water main breaks. We also have $20,000 budgeted in golf maintenance for repairs to the cart paths.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I move that we approve Resolution 17R-24 as read.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilwoman Farce, second by Councilman Blakeslee, that we do approve Resolution 17R-24 as presented. Any comments? Would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Farce.
Yes.
Councilmember Herbst.
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers.
Yes.
Councilmember Blakeslee.
Yes.
Councilmember Gerhardt.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis.
Yes.
Mayor Setser.
Yes, and the motion carries seven, zero. Resolution 17R-25, by title only, please.
Resolution 17R-25, a resolution adopting policies with respect to the city's land reutilization, reutilization program.
Thank you, Mr. Cruzey.
Thank you, Your Honor. So the, this policy would set forth criteria that the city would follow, determine which properties are eligible for the land bank program, and also sets forth the process to be followed.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve Resolution 17R-25.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilman Blakeslee, second by Councilman Ayers, that we do approve Resolution 17R-25. Comments or questions? Would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Herbst.
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers.
Yes.
Councilmember Blakeslee.
Yes.
Councilmember Gerhardt.
Yes.
Councilmember Farce.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis.
Yes.
Mayor Setser.
Yes, and the motion passes seven, zero. Resolution 17R-26, by title only, please.
17R-26, a resolution approving the final plat of the Flapjack One Holding Company plat.
Thank you. Mr. Cruzey.
Thank you, Your Honor. So this is a plat of a 9.960 acre parcel on the south side of Benchwood Road between Miller Lane and Dixie Drive, so it would dedicate 0.316 acres of right-of-way and also create a 0.996 acre lot and an 8.648 acre lot. Res zoning application has also been submitted to rezon the 0.996 acre parcel from residential single-family to gateway business. The Planning Commission reviewed this plat at its February 28th meeting and voted four zero to recommend approval.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Move that we approve Resolution 17R-26.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilwoman Ayers, second by Councilman Herbst, so we do approve Resolution 17R-26 as presented. Anybody? Would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Gerhardt.
Yes.
Councilmember Farce.
Yes.
Councilmember Herbst.
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers.
Yes.
Councilmember Blakeslee.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis.
Yes.
Mayor Setser.
Yes, and the motion passes seven, zero. Our ordinance is 17-06. Mr. McDonald.
Ordinance 1706, an ordinance to revise appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the City of Vandelia, Montgomery County, Ohio during the calendar year ending December 31, 2017, and amending ordinance 16-34 and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Mr. Cruzey.
Thank you, Your Honor. This ordinance would amend 2017 appropriations as follows. In the general fund, an additional $150,000. This is for an edge payment to Johnson Electric, for which the city will be reimbursed by Montgomery County. In the water fund, an additional $554,740. In the sewer fund, an additional $261,487. And in the golf fund, an additional $181,850. Again, these funds, this would appropriate funds in those, in those funds for the budgeted capital projects and debt service payments, which were inadvertently omitted from the 2017 appropriation ordinance that was adopted by council.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Your Honor, I'll move that we approve Ordinance 17-06 in its first reading.
Second.
It's been moved by Vice Mayor Lewis, second by Councilwoman Farce, that we do approve Ordinance 17R-06 in its first reading. Are there any comments from council? Seeing none, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Ayers.
Yes.
Councilmember Blakeslee.
Yes.
Councilmember Gerhardt.
Yes.
Councilmember Farce.
Yes.
Councilmember Herbst.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis.
Yes.
Mayor Setser.
Yes, and the motion carries seven, zero. Ordinance 17R-07, Mr. McDonald.
1707, an ordinance rezoning part of the property located at 3320 Benchwood Road from residential single-family to gateway business and amending the zoning map of the city.
Thank you, Mr. Cruzey.
Thank you, Your Honor. So this is the rezoning for the plat we spoke about earlier. So a rezoning request has been submitted to rezon a 0.996 acre parcel at the northeast corner of 3320 Benchwood Road from residential single-family one to gateway business. This request is a logical extension of the gateway business district, which the parcel abuts to the east and is in compliance with the future land use map. The purpose of the rezoning is for the development of a full-service restaurant. Planning Commission reviewed this rezoning request at its February 28th meeting and voted four zero to recommend approval.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Your Honor, I'll move that we approve Ordinance 17R-07 in its first reading.
Second.
It's been moved by Vice Mayor Lewis, second by Councilman Gerhardt to approve Ordinance 17R-07 in its second reading.
First reading.
First reading, sorry. Thank you. Any questions? Seeing none, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Farce.
Yes.
Yes.
Councilmember Herbst.
Yes.
Councilmember Aylers.
Yes.
Councilmember Blakeslee.
Yes.
Councilmember Gerhardt.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis.
Yes.
Mayor Sutter.
Yes, and the motion carries seven zero. Ordinance is in their second reading. Ordinance 17-05, Mr. McDonald?
1705, an ordinance approving a planned unit development, final development plan for Lot Two of the Forty West Development, formerly referred to as the Vandelia Office Park and located at 235 West National Road.
Thank you, Mr. Cruzey.
Thank you, Your Honor. Yellow Development One has submitted a final development plan for Lot Number Two of the Forty West Development located at 235 West National Road, which is the former Morton Middle School site. Lot Number Two is 1.3288 acres and is proposed to be developed in two phases. Phase one involves an approximately 7,600 square foot medical office building with the 5,000 square foot addition proposed in phase two. Off-street parking in phase one is one space short of what the code requires. However, phase two exceeds the off-street parking requirements by providing 75 parking spaces where only 63 are required. The developer is proposing a monument sign to be placed on Lot Number Two that would be used to identify all of the businesses in the office park, including those with no frontage along National Road. The developer is proposing a seven and a half foot high, 60 square foot monument sign where six feet in height and 24 square feet are the maximum permitted. The developer will also be extending the streetscape enhancements along the frontage of the development. The Planning Commission reviewed this final plat at its February 1st meeting and voted three zero to recommend approval with several conditions. First is that the freestanding monument sign be modified to include a base of exposed brick. And we were provided a, I guess, an image of the new sign, so they have revised the sign to provide the brick at the bottom. The freestanding sign shall serve as the only freestanding sign for lots one, two, and three of the development. Revised sheets need to be submitted with notes showing the revised sign of the sign, and that all wall signs shall conform to the sign code.
Thank you. Since this is an ordinance and a second reading, I'm going to open up a public hearing. So if there's anyone in the audience who would like to make comment, would you please come to the podium, state your name and address for our records and your comment? Good evening.
Hi, Jared Barnett with Yellow Development. Don't really have much to add to what Mr. Cruzey said other than I'm here to answer any questions. And we've obviously now closed on the dirt, so we're the proud owners of a piece of dirt and ready to get to work.
Great.
Thank you.
Anyone have any questions? He's here to answer them. Yes, not. Thank you. Is there anyone else who wants to make comment? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
I move that we approve ordinance 17-05 in its second reading.
Second.
It's been moved by Vice, by Councilwoman Farce, second by Councilman Blakeslee, that we do approve ordinance 17-05 in its second reading. Any comments? Seeing none, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Blakeslee.
Yes.
Councilmember Gerhardt.
Yes.
Councilmember Farce.
Yes.
Councilmember Herbst.
Yes.
Councilmember Aylers.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis.
Yes.
Mayor Sutter.
Yes, and the motion passes seven zero. We have no emergency ordinances and we have reports from boards and commissions. We have the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board minutes and year-end report for February 15, 2017. We have Planning Commission minutes of February the 14th, and we have a variance request at 852 East National Road. Mr. Cruzey?
Thank you, Your Honor. So O'Reilly Auto Parts is requesting a variance to allow a 20-foot-high, 48-square-foot pole sign where a 6-foot-high, 35-square-foot monument sign with a brick stoner base is required. The BZA reviewed this matter at its February 8th meeting and voted five zero to recommend denial.
Thank you. Is there a motion?